Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of Residents Council on February 9th, 2024. Thank you all for being here. I also want to thank Frank Miller, who could not be here as he's having hand surgery today, but he would have been here if he could have. And I think everybody signed in. Those of you who are area reps, if you share the area with someone else, there is one vote per area, so make sure you just vote once. We'll be voting on these proposed bylaws. And the people who can vote, I think you all know, is one person from each area, so an area rep from each area, committee chairs and officers are allowed to vote. I want to give particular thanks to the bylaws review committee. The people who served on that are Sally Dingley, Don Branson, Pete Hutchison, and last but not least, Elizabeth Hawa. Elizabeth thinks I lied. I didn't intentionally lie when she agreed to serve as chairman. I said, "I don't think this will take too long or too many meetings." I didn't mean to lead you astray. Elizabeth is now going to review each proposal. At the end of each proposal, we will take just a minute so that you may check your ballot. If you are going to object to one, I'd appreciate it if you waved your hand. We'll do questions first, but then wave your hand so we'll know if fifteen hands go up. We got a problem there, okay? Elizabeth.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna try to work with this mic. I'm not, I asked some questions about it. Dan? Is that better?
Yes, good.
I'm gonna start with, and you have the ballot, so you can kind of follow along and we'll, you know, see if there are any questions after each one. But the first one is a relatively simple one. Article two, section 2.2, we just changed which controls Cedarfield to of Cedarfield. Any discussion on that?
Mike mentioned it does not change the reporting relationship.
Right, it doesn't.
I don't think we're going to need to move to adopt since each one of you has a ballot in front of you, so you can vote just if you've got a while, you know, you're not comfortable, just let me know that. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Under Article three, sections three and five, we changed the quorum for voting from 25% of the members to 50 members. That seemed to be more reasonable. The other was a bit problematic. Yes?
Could you just explain that a little more?
This is for the association. With 520 members, we would need to get approximately 125 people to have a quorum, and that's can be tough. So the committee was thinking 50 people to get a quorum for the association would be a better number. Any discussion?
Under Article four, section one, we clarified the membership of the council to include 13 committee chairs and increase the number of area representatives to 23. So this was just a clarification. Nothing was really changing, but I wanted to be sure that was clear as to the 13 committee members being a part of that. No discussion? Yes?
Were they voting before?
Yes.
It was.
Way over in a very different part of the bylaws. It clarified that committee chairs were voting members, but I thought it made much more sense to put in one paragraph at the beginning who the voting members were.
Okay.
Increasing the areas from 21 to 23 is a change. Council voted a couple of months ago to increase to 22, which accommodates two floors of assisted living. Area 23 will be for healthcare for the social worker to work with those folks to have a voice and a representative if they are able.
I just did not know about the committee chair.
Yeah, that we're already voting.
Section four, I mean Article four, section three inserted the last, in the last sentence regarding meeting notices, may be delivered to the council member in person via email or it may be mailed to or delivered at the council member's residence. So that added the process of emailing to the mix so that we would have more options. Make it a little bit simpler. Any comments or questions on that? Under Article four, sections four and five, and also Article five, sections one, three, five, nine, and 10, and Article eight, section one, we dealt with eliminating treasurer from the title of secretary treasurer and assistant secretary treasurer. Yes?
I'm very concerned about that. Having been a treasurer in a number of organizations, we do get $500 a year from Cedarfield, is that correct? And we make a decision of how to spend it. So once we make that decision of how to spend it, who's responsible for going to the business office now to tell them how we spend it?
The president.
So why are we just taking it away from the secretary and giving it to the president as one more thing for the president to do? Plus, what if we decide we want to spend some of that money other than giving it away at the end of the year? Let's say when I'm president, I want to buy voting paddles or something like that and get it approved by this group. I just think when you take away the treasurer name, you're saying, "Ah, it might be okay to take away our money because we don't use it anyhow." It's just, maybe that's my personal thing, having been treasurer of a number of organizations, but I think it's just really kind of dangerous to take that out.
Since for 28 years, Residents Council has not had any money except a sum given to them, and we, it never even touches us. We, I sent a note to David Taylor saying, "This is what we're planning to do at Residents Council," and he says, "Fine." And then as soon as it's done, I report him, I send him a note saying, "The vote was unanimous to spend it in these three buckets." And you're right, we might someday choose how to do it, but it doesn't involve a person, I mean, I could ask the secretary to take care of it rather than my doing it, and that's maybe what you will choose to do in a couple of years.
Yeah, well, I just think, once you take it out of the bylaws, it's gone.
Okay. And is there further discussion on this? Then I would say vote your conscience, conscience up. Vivian?
Could it be added to the description of the duties of the president of the council? If that's the way it's been handled for years and years.
What did she say?
The question was, could it be added to the duties of the president if that's the way it's been handled for 28 years? I'm sure you could add it, but there are so many duties of the president that are not listed anywhere. I think it would get a little cumbersome to try to put that in. I mean, it's $500 and for years we've done it in three buckets, but please feel free to vote as you wish.
Moving on, Article five, section one, that's just a minor change from end to on in the last sentence.
We skipped number six.
Article five, section three.
We added the new section under Article, the Article five, section three, "The assistant secretary shall assume the office of secretary upon expiration of his or her term as assistant secretary. If the office of secretary becomes vacant before the expiration of the term, the assistant secretary shall assume the office and duties of secretary for the remainder of the term of the former secretary. And the office of assistant secretary shall remain vacant until filled by the council for the unexpired term." And I think this was done just to further clarify how that would work. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, moving on to Article five, section four.
Article five, section one.
Okay, I've got, I've, I see what happened. That's it.
That's Article five, section one.
Section one, isn't it?
Yeah, going back to Article five, section one.
What number is that?
Seven. That was just a change from end to on. Okay, the next one is Article five, section four, and it changed the, all right, okay, I'm, I'm, I'll have to go back. I'm using my own sheet here, and I think there've been some changes in the order. We changed Article four, section one, changed 21. Article six, section one, we changed 21 to 23 and added a statement that the residents of area 23 will work through the social worker to organize and be given opportunities to voice concerns that arise with Cedarfield. So that was the change, the big change to add the new areas. And as Anne has already stated, that was to provide areas that would serve the assisted living area and also the healthcare units. Barbara, you have?
Right, I, my question was, the residents, is there any interest in recognizing that maybe it would be a caretaker or families involved?
It will be difficult to find an individual who lives in healthcare who will be willing and able to serve as a representative, and so it may be somebody else, but they need to be given the chance to be given a vote, and I see no reason that it couldn't be a somebody else. I'm not gonna say who, but it could be somebody else representing those residents.
Are they required by law in the Commonwealth to have an association, and do we act as that association?
They are required by the Commonwealth. Up until now, there was area 21, which served all of healthcare. Jan Leighton lives in assisted living. Memory Care is licensed as part of assisted living, therefore the assisted living Residents Council does it. But with the addition last summer of 25 new apartments to assisted living, that got to be a bit more than Jan could chew off. So we changed their area to 21 and 22 and then added 23. And yes, by state law, they are required to have a council. And I will say that I was invited to one of their council meetings this past year. It was in November, and Sally Ayers went as well because that was where she was talking about the Holiday Fund. And it's a very small group. It serves a very frail and elderly population.
Any other comments on that one? Article seven, we changed the first paragraph to add a sentence as follows. "The committee chair shall serve a maximum of three years unless a certain qualification is needed." And I understand there's been some history with this, and I think this was a way to better deal with, with the situation where maybe people are serving for very extended periods of time as the chair of a committee. And as it says here, there may be a certain qualification that's needed, but sometimes there isn't, so that's, that's what I know about it. Anne, you want to add to that?
And I'll talk about some of the qualifications. Louisa is a good qualification to talk about. Louisa has served for more than three years as chair of the Flower Committee, now known as the Flower Guild, or it will be officially seen, it's been approved by Residents Council. Louisa has, one, quite extensive experience as a florist, and also she holds a florist license, which saves Cedarfield considerable money in buying the flowers and so forth. And the hours that she expends, not to mention the other members of her committee, is great. The healthcare committee needs someone to chair that committee who understands healthcare, not somebody like me who has only been a patient. You know, that's not the best kind of person. The finance committee is currently chaired by non, a person with lots of nonprofit experience and a CPA, and I know that that committee chair is working with someone with similar qualifications to get them ready to take over that job definitely by next year.
And where are those changes? Have we not come to them? Because I saw it in some of the committees, with the changes saying that the Flower Guild, and what are we in?
Well, the Flower Guild.
In seven, it doesn't say.
The Flower Guild is a change.
Which shall provide fresh flower arrangements for the town center and coordination. Where is it telling about this requirement?
It does not say in any of the write-ups on the committee about particular expertise. There might be at some point, Barbara, something that somebody needs to be a gymnast to chair the wellness committee, I cannot imagine, but it could. So it does not say in any of the committee write-ups what those are. Cheryl, Anne?
Who determines the certain qualifications that are needed?
Since the president, or basically the president-elect at this time of year is nominating people to chair the committees, and then the committees will be elected by the council at our meeting on February 28th, which is also the annual meeting of the Residents Association, but on that particular item, it'll just be Residents Council members that will vote. Further question, discussion?
The next one is Article seven, section 1.1, simple change of Cedar, I just, to Cedarfield Voices, which is just an up-to-date change. Don't have to be any concerns about that one. The next one is Article seven, section 1.2, the dining committee, and that's a very small change in the wording there, mainly the addition of a comment about positive and negative feedback from residents, either through direct communication with the dining staff or through the use of comment cards. And I think we wanted it to be clear that that was always an option, that the dining committee historically has not dealt with food and service. It has a different twist to it that's more about the procedures and processes that go on with dining. And this was a way to, to insert the opportunity for the residents to, to comment on the food or, or service. Any discussion on that? Yes?
You have changed a, in communications, section one, fourth lineup from the bottom, changes to policies and practices that will benefit the residents of indubited, in the minute. You've changed it from may to will. You have no way of knowing whether or not they will benefit the residents until after they've been implemented, so I think that's better left as may benefit.
Where are you?
I'm in Article seven, committees, dining, part two, fourth lineup from the bottom, right before environmental work, says, "The dining committee shall work with the dining staff in an advisory capacity, consider policies and practices, to recommend changes to policies and practices that will benefit the residents." It previously says may benefit here. So you're changing may to will. My question is, how do you know whether or not they will benefit until they're implemented?
That's evidently a typo.
So she's looking at this.
Well, and it's not showing in what I was saying in print, so it's, it's over, there's overplay, so I can't see that change. It's not in, here's the one, what went into the area. No, but it's not in the bylaws either.
Yeah, you should say may. Now, my question is, how do we know it will benefit if we haven't tried it?
Can you read, can you read it because it doesn't show in what was sent out by the area rep?
I, I don't have my whole old bylaws with me that I can find.
This was sent out by Amanda Kelly.
I've got that. I've got the proposed change and whether or not there was a change. Have you got the old bylaws with you?
Yeah.
Consider policies and practices in that department and to recommend changes to policies and practices that will benefit residents who benefit their living.
Is that the current bylaws? I'm not talking about this.
Yeah. It gives the old and the changes, both of them.
Well, I've got that document. I'm asking if anybody has the actual bylaws in the Residents Council handbook. Do you have yours with you?
I have. If this was the.
That is not the, I mean, it should be the actual bylaws, but I want to pull the old copy of the bylaws. May I ask that you all will trust me to go back to the actual bylaws to see whether it says will or may? This should be the actual bylaws, and the way Amanda changed them, I mean, she should not have changed that. I can't imagine that she would have, but can you?
Section 1.2, is that right?
It's Article seven, section 1.2 on dining committee, and it's the word will benefit or may benefit.
It says may be of benefit in the original.
And then the change I have says will.
And yes, her change says will. So it's, is it the last sentence? It's a long sentence. No, it's not.
It's the next or the last sentence?
It's the second sentence.
All right, will all of you change yours to may be of benefit?
May benefit.
May, it says may be of benefit.
That may be of benefit to the residents who benefit their living.
Yeah, may be of benefit.
Thank you. We will make that change. After this meeting, we're going to get together, take the actual bylaws, mark them all up, get them to Amanda so that on Monday she can put these in the edited comment, which will then have to go to all 520 members of the association and for them to vote on.
But the best thing is to redline every change, and that wasn't done.
And I have no idea why that was changed.
Yet, I know, Anne.
Yes, Carla?
Anne, I don't know if we could, but my residents need a bigger, a bigger type. They cannot read this small type.
I will ask Amanda if she can get her mic.
Okay, yeah.
Fourteen words.
Further questions on dining?
Well, I'm just thinking when they present this, I'm used to when I get bylaws changes that the current is just blacklined through and remains in black and only the changes are in red.
Her editing doesn't do that.
Okay.
So it will be in this editing format. Further discussion on dining? Robbie, sorry, I can't see.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, you said that the dining committee does not deal with food and service. That is not correct.
I was gonna say, it's getting ready to, but.
Yeah, we dealt with it, we did not deal with individual situations where somebody had a problem. Then, yes, the cards or talking to staff, but if it was of interest to more than one person, if it was interest to a number of people, we did bring that up, we did deal with it.
Right. So that comment from Ravi Ravindranath, the current chair of dining, said that the dining committee will deal with an issue about food if it's something that involves more than one resident. Residents that have an individual concern, put them on comment cards or preferably speak immediately that evening to one of the dining managers. Is there further discussion on dining?
Moving on to the environmental committee, that's Article seven, section 1.3. We changed the wording with input from the, the chair of that group, I believe, to include recycling, two regular meetings, to include one recycling, two regular meetings, and three coordination with the horticulturists and the maintenance and engineering team.
Did anyone talk to staff about this, the people, you know, in maintenance and whether, how they can do this or not do this?
The main change is the recycling subcommittee, which has done a yeoman's service over the last several years of getting recycling in all the different areas, has done a yeoman's job, but they felt like their job had come to an end, and so rather than being a subcommittee of environmental, it would just shift to be part of the environmental committee. There are regular communications, I believe, well, by some of us, I do, with Sharon Brown because housekeeping takes place, takes care of the recycling. The maintenance and engineering generally has to do when Andy and his committee and volunteers that he gets go out and trim the branches and the shrubbery from the trails that are in, within the Cedarfield. So that's the main part of that. Anything else you want to say, Andy?
No, you go.
All right. Any other, any other discussion on environmental? Louisa?
Just questions on the one, two, three. Does it read actually, change wording to include recycling, regular meetings and coordination, rather than one of this, two of that, clear there?
Yeah, so it's just, those were the changes.
Yeah, those were.
In the wording, it's A, P.
Actually, so that one, two, and three can disappear before we do the, the actual bylaws, but that was to clarify what the change is on. Further discussion on environmental?
Well, the, the red says that it's gonna say, "Which shall make recommendations to an assist administration with A, recycling, and B, the maintenance." I don't know where it has the regular meetings added.
It's the next line.
Oh, I see, it is at the end. Never mind, it's there.
Further discussion on environmental?
Okay, moving on, Article seven, section 1.6, that was a change to the current name of the Flower Guild rather than just Flower Committee. Article seven, section 1.8, the Health Services Committee, and that added current names for Cedarfield Assisted Living, Garden Grove and Morning Glory, and Cedarfield Healthcare Units, Poppy Place, Magnolia Mall, and Lavender Lane. Any comments on that?
Where are they gonna be added? Are they added to signs or what? It says they're gonna be added.
Oh. Go ahead.
I don't have a lot yet.
There, where are these, where will the names be added or the actual apartment?
It says, add his current names for Cedarfield Assisted Living. Where are they gonna be added?
In the, in the committee description.
Committee description, yes.
Well, what, I mean, there's some talk that they might not leave their names forever.
Trust me, I have mentioned this on numerous occasions this year with Mrs. Chapman, saying, "Is there a possibility we might be changing these names?" And I have been told, "No, not now." So it just brings the document up to date with what the current names are as opposed to the old names, and we can continue to look forward to new names for these areas.
So you're not, you're not gonna have both? Am I, are they gonna identify these new fancy names like Dandelion Delia?
Mushroom Manor. I was gonna say, in, in the write-up of the committee, it will say Cedarfield Assisted Living, Garden Grove and Morning Glory, and Cedarfield Healthcare, Poppy. Poppy Place, Lavender Lane, Magnolia Mall. So we'll take the old names and put the current ones in, and we can all look with anticipation for what new names might be sometime.
But your document, or it should really show the old and, and then have in red or whatever the new stuff. I mean, it's not that way in what our area consent. So it really should keep the old to show the changes.
Well, mine shows Cedar Woods Health Center, Secret Garden Villas, and Sunshine Plaza. And all of that is crossed out, and then the new stuff is inserted.
What happened when, with the version that I got, it just says relies.
And Barbara, I will tell you what happened, 'cause I had the same thing happen with mine. My Apple computer is so smart, it takes all that struck stuff out. So I had to go to Amanda and get an actual hard copy of what she had written because my Apple computer is smarter. So if you have an Apple.
I don't.
I don't know what.
I got it from an apple.
That, that would be it then? That would, that would be it.
Well, that, I'm just saying that I think before the final votes, there ought to be some.
There will be paper copies, just like.
Better highlight it, not apple.
There will be paper copies from Amanda that will have everything crossed out, new stuff put in, where in the world the may and will be came from. I, I can't answer that question today. Cheryl Lynn?
Do we need to have the names in there at all if we say assisted living, healthcare, memory care? Why change the bylaws every time we change a street name, so to speak? I mean.
Well, the old names evidently lasted for a number of years. These names have been with us now for two or three years, three years, I think, they came in. So it needs to say what it is, and then we'll hope for the best. Linda?
Yeah, I think it does mean, and you said that we will distribute.
Hang on a second, I can't hear you.
The, the paper that you said will distribute to everybody, is that gonna be the whole thing or just these changes?
It will be very similar to what the area reps should have received, except this time it will be paper copies. So if somebody has an apple, they're not gonna get, it will be a hard paper copy. Will get distributed to everybody, all 520 residents. There will be a ballot because there won't be, and that ballot will just say approve or not approve the bylaws, 'cause we are today adopting them and they can either vote them up or down. And there will be special instructions on the front. Cheryl Lynn?
This is actually in the real bylaws, just an editorial change. Taking out an old name and putting in a new name. It's not changing anything at all.
No.
Except.
Many of these things are editorial.
It's essentially an editorial change.
Many of the changes before you today are editorial changes. Any further interest on health services?
Elizabeth? Article 7, Section 1.12. That just changed the committee name to Welcome Committee. It was called Welcoming, and the committee suggested that, that it be changed to Welcome. Article 7, Section 1.13, that's the Wellness and Leisure Committee. Thank you. Article 7, Section 1.13, the Wellness and Leisure Committee. It changed the wording to read as follows. Three members, which shall include three members as liaisons to the team leaders of three subgroups. A, Programs, B, Wellness and Fitness, and C, Creative Arts. The committee shall serve as a resource for the team member leaders. A, Pathways to Wellness Manager, B, Wellness Coordinator, and C, Creative Expressions Coordinator. By generating ideas for activities and programs, by giving feedback regarding current programs, and by reporting significant activities to the residents council. Barbara, are we in line with that?
That's, it used to say that we would have the committee and then we're gonna have three, three subcommittees. And the committee was, that's not the way the committee had worked.
Anything else on that? Moving on. Article 7, Section 3. It added the president-elect as an ex officio member of all committees except the nominating committee.
This is Section 3?
Section 3 of Article 7.
Oh, I got it.
And I think that's been the practice this year, for two years. Article 7, Section 8. Provided the opportunity for the training of independent living residents regarding licensed living opportunities. Something wrong here, wait a minute. Let me, let me get that.
We will need to do a change of wording there. It should say provided, provides an opportunity for the training of independent living residents regarding the licensed areas. All of us here are here because we may one day be in the licensed areas. And so a resident wanted to make sure that when Health Services does its training, as it's done several times this year, that it's in line with what the committee description says. Cheryl Lynn?
What in the heck does that mean? What are training independent living residents to do and who's responsible for evaluating whether or not they do it and who's liable for whatever they do?
Oh, it's even longer. The committee may also provide training to independent living residents to prepare them for instances where they may need assistance from Cedarfield Health Services. This is for the Health Services Committee. For example, this year, they did a training program on, if you go to the hospital here, you'll find your way home.
I think this to be interpreted in a lot more serious things than that. When you say provide opportunity for training of independent living residents, you're not saying what kind of training, you're not saying what they're going to do over there, who's going to supervise them, who's legally responsible. I think it's a Pandora's box that you might want to leave out.
All right. Further discussion on that? Cheryl Lynn, wait a minute, Cheryl Lynn feels that it's too broadly worded and feels we should leave it out? Barbara?
Article 7, Section 8, huh? You know, Article 7 was.
Is the Health Services Committee.
Oh, you went back up.
Should be, Section 1.8, probably.
Okay, yes, okay. So we went out of order because Health Services is 8. So that's all, this is just out of order. Oh, I guess not.
At the end of the paragraph.
Yeah, you have Section 3.
No.
And you added it to 8, no?
No. Number 18 should be Article 7, Section 1.8, not Section 8. Section 1.8, which is the description of the Health Services Committee. And it's adding a sentence. The committee may also provide training to independent living residents to prepare them for instances where they may need assistance from Cedarfield Health Services. The, the thought in the sentence was so that that committee could do training for independent living residents. Sometimes they have had social workers from independent living and healthcare and things, so sometimes they've done that, sometimes they've brought in outside speakers. You know, there's always a health person who's chairing that Health Services Committee. Cheryl Lynn feels that should be taken out. Further discussion on Health Services Committee? Sylvia?
I'm not clear why I would need that in the bylaws.
Frankly, I wasn't either, but evidently a resident felt strongly we needed to give Health Services the ability to be able to provide training for independent living.
But they don't need a bylaw to do that.
I'll tell you why. In the olden days, if you read the minutes, they did that kind of stuff. And Health Services, it isn't being done at all. And from time to time, Wellness and Leisure people came to us and said, well, why aren't you doing it? And we said, well, that should be Health Services, not us. Now, how it should be worded, I don't know because my Apple version doesn't have.
All right, that was Barbara saying sometimes it used to be Health Services and people coming to Wellness. It was always Health Services, but people would come to Wellness and say, why aren't you doing that? Vivian?
Is the problem with the word training, that's what, if this, if the kinds of meetings that you've been talking about, I would characterize as informational.
Yes, right.
Provided, all right, provided. The committee may also provide information to independent living residents to prepare them for instances where they may need assistance from Cedarfield Health Services. All right, that one, one change of changing the word training to information.
It really, I agree, it probably doesn't need to be in the bylaws, that's a program thing.
Well, hang on, Sylvia was next.
Yeah, this is not a bylaw.
Right? Sylvia is saying it doesn't need to be a bylaw, Cheryl Lynn is saying it's not, doesn't need to be a bylaw. Can everybody vote their feeling on this and we can move on?
Well, I would just say that it's been needed for some time that we do training. I don't use that word, information about volunteering opportunities. And unless it's in the bylaws, the Health Services Committee is probably not going to go there.
Now, you're saying information about volunteer services, that's a very different thing than what this is. Cheryl Lynn?
Well, I don't know what this is.
One of the things that has bothered me since I've been here, when I go to resident council meetings, there's never any business.
Well, Cheryl Lynn?
Or new business. I know, it gets done in committees, there is business being done. But when you look at the minutes, there's nothing that says we do any business. Resident council members in your area should be bringing those kinds of issues that your residents have. I need more information about this, I need more information about that. And residents council should be providing some programs on that, either through getting somebody from healthcare or somebody from social work or.
Cheryl Lynn, thank you. What Cheryl Lynn is saying is what I've been trying to say to area reps all year long. Area reps provide the foundation for residents council. So when you are talking with the residents in your area and you hear them describe, we really ought to have a program on getting bats in the sky, whatever it is, then either come to your current president, come to the chair of the current committee, bring it up somehow so that it will get addressed. And either you'll find out that program is not needed or is needed. But yes, the independent living area residents, I shouldn't just say independent living, all of the area residents provide the foundation for the work of the, of the residents council. Is there further discussion on Item 18, which would now say provided opportunity? The committee may also provide information to independent living residents to prepare them for instances where they may need assistance from Cedarfield Health Services. Please vote and we'll move on.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Article 9. Section 3. Added the residents council officer as ex officio member of bylaws, of the bylaws committee, making it a committee of five. And stated that none of the other four members will be current members of residents council. That's, that's done, and that was discussed by the bylaws committee. And it was in us, in, I know we talked with Ann about it too. And the ideal was to have somebody there who probably is gonna know more about the operation of the residents council. And who could, who would be very well informed and could provide some input. And it would also, as, as we discussed in the committee, it would also give you five people so that if you did have a disagreement about something, then it could be voted on. You, you would have, you wouldn't have two against two because that's, that becomes a problem too, if there's, are strong feelings. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
It says residents council officer. I assume that. I think that the issue is, as I read it, you really mean one residents council member. Do you mean the president, president-elect secretary?
There are five officers of residents council. President, president-elect, immediate past president, secretary, and assistant or secretary-elect. So those are five officers. The reason we said one officer, often your area reps may not fully understand how residents council operates and have taken the time to read these lovely bylaws. So that's why we wanted somebody who's currently on council to be on the committee to help them figure that out.
Anything else on that? Okay, moving on to Exhibit A. We've talked about the addition of Areas 22 and 23 for assisted living and healthcare. And we also here have made some changes that were actually in existence already, but with two of the areas, 4 and 5. There was a change that we needed to make in, in the document because the people have been meeting in that particular configuration from Regions 4 and 5. And this was just an update on the practice.
I don't think that's accurate. They've been meeting, the one cul-de-sac was split in half. And I counted, you know, there were X number of cottages in Area 4 and Y in Area 5, but.
Areas 4 and 5 changed by moving four cottages from one area to the other area to make them basically equal. The other way was like 13 cottages in one and 24 in the other. So this evens them up. It does split a cul-de-sac down the middle, but they've been, Frank and Dean Mountcastle have been living there for 10 years and they have been practicing this exact way for 10 years. So this just.
Well, no, they, they haven't. This doesn't split them, the split is gone. And the whole one that was split is now an area.
No, this changed.
This is a change. This is a change that came out, this now splits it down. Any further discussion?
And then finally, throughout the document, we used residents council with the plural S apostrophe. That, that needed to be changed in the document.
I think there'd be any discussion on that one.
Elizabeth, thank you for this simple job that you agreed to take some, some months ago. And I want to thank Mike Greenberg because, Greenwood, because these were supposed to have been done last year, but he left them for me to do. So Mike, thank you. Want to appreciate that. Just by hands, is there anyone that got overwhelming support not to adopt one of these changes? I know that some of you are not voting in favor, but is there anyone? You know, the question on Health Services, are, are there a bunch of you that are voting no? We're gonna count these ballots in a few minutes. One more reminder. Last reminder for area reps, please send your complete information as to who the area rep or reps will be for next year. Make sure you get that to Beth Long. I know she's got it from a lot of you, but make sure you get that. Andy, Cheryl Lynn?
You sent a very nice memo when this came out with all the rationales. I, I hope you're going to just modify that a little bit and send them with it again because it was a.
Now, I sent last night, or I tried to send last night and I was not successful. Mary Ann sent to you the other proposed changes. No, there will not be a rationale because these will have been adopted as of today. We will send these in the revised format to all of the residents who will then get to vote by ballot.
No, I'm, I'm just saying residents may have some questions as to what the rationale for that was. And your memo.
And your area rep should have given those to you. So your area reps are responsible for communicating with all the residents within Cedarfield.
Right, they got it, but I'm not sure when you hand this out to 500 people, they're gonna remember they got it.
Well, we'll see.
I was just asking, as an area representative, will somebody be stuffing all these ballots?
into the second mailbox, and area reps are not responsible for giving them to the people in our hall?
You will be turning these ballots in right now, 'cause we've gotta count them. And get the...
I'm turning out the new changes that are coming out where everybody has to vote.
520 people will be getting them, and that will be taken care of by Mary Ann, me, Beth Long, Amanda Kelly. We will be getting them at the very first of the week, to everybody. There will be ballot boxes. I will talk with David Taylor about how many ballot boxes we need, 'cause there'll be one for third floor assisted living, one for fourth floor assisted living, well, and, and one for healthcare fourth floor, one for healthcare fifth floor. There will be one for all of us in independent living, probably in the town center. Any further business to come before us today? Do you see the note in the middle of your agenda that talks about the annual meeting of the residents association on Wednesday, the 28th, at 2:00, in this beautiful room with viewing pleasure in Prima Club? Amanda Kelly has notified us that she is able to make the changes in a different color from something that came, a comment that came up a little while ago, so that should happen. I see a hand.
Yeah. Are you saying that you're gonna give them the bylaws and a ballot and have them stuff their vote in a ballot box? And I just don't know what the, what the bylaws say about that. I didn't know if there was anything about in person.
It does say in person, but Barbara, where would you find room for 520 or even 300 people to meet right now? Since we have no room in which to meet...
I know, I know that.
Do we need a rest, do we need a vote from this body to authorize us to do ballots, since there is no space available for an annual meeting? We may need that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It might be helpful to have it in the background since the bylaws say something else.
I will move that we have authorized me, no, I shouldn't be moving that. Will somebody move? Mary Ann Bagby is moving that we...
I second.
And Barbara Rose has seconded that residents council is authorized to do this voting by the association in paper ballot, since we do not have a fellowship hall in which to go.
All with questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, is a pla, oh, wait a minute, question?
You were talking about the color. She's gonna use some other color. That's, I wanna make sure that if she can, get a bigger type.
Right, that's a different, yeah. I'm gonna ask her to do a different type, a bigger type. And have it on, you know, it should be on consecutive pages. Right now, we've got some blank pages and so forth. Any further business to come, to come before this august body? Meeting adjourned. Pass your ballots in.